Key Largo.
First.
Call the meeting order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I didn't even update my computer. I turned on, this is what I got.
Welcome to the February 16th Post Falls City Council meeting. Hard to believe we're halfway through February and we have our second bout of winter.
Yeah.
The winter comes though.
Clerk will note that all council members are present, as Mr. Malloy said, we got the band back together. It's nice to see everybody here. Tonight, under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we do have one announcement. Congratulations to our Finance Director, Jason Faulkner, and the city's Finance Department on receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. The city has achieved this award annually since 1999. Good job, Jason and your team. It was interesting, there's a comment made that he had to live up to our city administrator's record, and he says, "I think I only have eight more years in a row to get it, to catch her." So, the City of Post Falls has, for many, many years, obviously, been a leader in the manner in which we present our financial information. I know there's legislation being bantered about to make everything more transparent, and I would just say, if you want to see transparency in government, look at the City of Post Falls. So, Jason, I think you're probably out there somewhere on Zoom. Shelley, the whole Finance Department, thank you for your efforts. It is very much appreciated. Tonight, we have a Police Department Award presentation, and with that, I would like to introduce Chief Knight.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police, and get the opportunity to talk a little bit about some of the working relationships that we have around here with our fellow agencies. That's something we're very proud of, and I think the other agencies are as well. But this evening, one of those agencies is here to talk a little bit about something else. And we have some members, I know Greg Legore is here, with a couple of members of his staff from the Secret Service, and we're here to talk a little bit about the great work of Detective Neil Ureg. However, Detective Ureg, I've got to tell you, he worked on a presentation he thought he was given this evening. It's obviously not a presentation. But being the great detective he is, he probably read the minutes and saw a word presentation, and he knew he wasn't doing much. So, with that, I don't want to steal any of Greg Legore's thunder. I'd like to invite Greg down to the stand and turn it over to Greg.
Good evening. As the chief said, my name is Greg Legore. I'm the agent in charge of the Secret Service Office here in Spokane. I'd like to start and first thank Chief Knight and Captain McLean for their extraordinary leadership and partnership, certainly in the area of computer and electronic crimes, forensic investigations. In 2016, the chief and captain submitted Detective Ureg's name to my office to be nominated for, to be picked up for training at the National Computer Forensic Institute. I think at that time, I certainly could not have envisioned, and I have to imagine, they would think the same thing, the extraordinary relationship that, over the last couple of years now, that we've developed between the Secret Service, my office, and the Post Falls Police Department. I can say without a doubt that my office, my staff who are here tonight with me, Agent Randy Redder and Agent Paul Hagedorn, who've worked with Neil the longest, we have certainly benefited from Neil's expertise, his partnership, and certainly all that he has learned, and he has mastered, the traits and skills he's mastered over the last few years. I'd like to thank that the Post Falls Police Department, your community specifically, has benefited from that partnership as well. As I think you are all aware, and I think it's my understanding, Detective Ureg has briefed you, the training that the Secret Service National Forensics Institute has provided, its thousands, tens of thousands of dollars worth of training, equipment that's provided, and we still, in our partnership, continue to try to provide some funding to Detective Ureg and the Police Department for hopefully keeping up some of the licensing and some of the tools and software in the ever-changing forensic environment. Most importantly, I think, and I hope, and I do believe, not just the Post Falls community, but I think the North Idaho and even Eastern Washington communities have benefited from this partnership. I do see, on a regular basis, by way of statistical tracking, some of the work that Neil is doing, and I am well aware that his expertise is sought after in North Idaho, other police departments who do not have forensic examiners. I know my office is relied on his expertise. We don't have one currently in our office, and we could certainly send him off to our bigger offices, but with this partnership, Neil is just an absolute rock star in terms of supporting the Secret Service at times and the agents in my office with some of the work that they do and the forensic needs that we have. So, it's really a testament to his professionalism, his dedication to the work he does, to this community, and it's a privilege for us to be here tonight. I'd like to note, if you've not previously heard the statistics, so, the National Computer Forensic Institute each year recognizes its top 50 examiners nationwide. That's more than 1,700 officers and detectives who participate, who actively participate with the program. This past year, and we do everything on our fiscal year, which runs from October 1 through September 30, so for the 2020 fiscal year, Detective Ureg examined over 75 terabytes of data, which is quite extraordinary, and that breaks down into over 256 exams, could be a computer, cellphone-type exam. The agents and I were just commenting that that probably breaks down when you factor in his weekends, his vacation time, holidays, and things like that. He's probably doing one or two per day, which is quite extraordinary. So, he is being recognized for his extraordinary work. He placed 49th out of the over 1,700 agents, or excuse me, officers and detectives who participate in the program. So, on behalf of the NCFI, on behalf of my office, and the agents in my office who are not here, we'd like to have Neil come up and receive a token of our appreciation for the great work that he's done in the partnership that he's been with us.
Thank you.
That's a good badge. I thought they were sending you a computer to examine when the box came in. That thing's, wow. Thank you.
We can't thank you enough. Yeah, appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Neil, on behalf of myself and the council, we have been beneficiaries of the work that you've done. I know you are highly thought of, not just by the Secret Service and our own Police Department, but, as you said, by other agencies as well. You gave me the opportunity to take a look at some of the things you do, and I didn't understand it, and I'm really not sure what a terabyte is. I thought it was a dinosaur. But I know you do a ton of work, and I know that you've been very successful. I know the training that was provided has been very beneficial to us, so we can't extend enough appreciation to you and the department for the work that you've done for our community. Thank you very much.
And again, I thank the chief, I thank the council for your steadfast support with us. It is a partnership that I hope will continue to be as beneficial as it has been, I hope, moving forward. Again, we can't thank you enough for everything you do, Neil. You're just fantastic. Thank you. Congratulations, what an achievement.
Thank you very much.
Neil, I guess you're not making a presentation tonight, is that correct?
I wrote notes. Thank you.
You know, though, it would be, it would be great, I know we're not supposed to shake hands or anything, but I'm fascinated by that award. If you go walk by, walk by and let us see your award.
Mr. Anthony says he's not sure how you're going to put that on your uniform.
Very nice.
That's nice, really nice.
Congratulations, Neil.
Nice, well deserved.
Awesome job, Neil.
That is very cool.
Very nice, yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Next item up is Julie Holt, the new Post Falls Chamber Board President, was going to be here to introduce herself to us, but we're enjoying her via Zoom tonight. Julie.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Jacobson and City Council members. I hope you can hear me, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've been a little under the weather this week, so I decided to Zoom in instead of be there in person, but I'm very honored to serve this year as the Chair of the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce, and it's a big job, and a lot of great people have preceded me, and I'm going to do my best to honor the city as well as the chamber. We're happy, I think most of you probably know by now, that we have a new CEO, Christina Petit, and she's really doing a great job and learning a lot, and we're looking forward to working with her. Just a couple of comments, I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you and the other leaders of our community, and a couple of our key areas that we want to look at this year is economic development and public policy. I see those as some of the most important things we could be doing in support of our business community. So, I look, that's primarily what I want to say, I want to say thank you. It's an honor to be here and to work with all of you, and I look forward to getting to know you better and to learning from you about what our city's key challenges are and how the chamber can partner with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the February 2nd, 2021, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, January 26 through February 8, 2021. Item C is Livingston Annexation Denial File Number ANNX-0005-2020. Item D is Consent to Annex Agreement with Crystal Creek LLC. Item E is Consent to Annex Agreement with CJKS and CJ Trust Property and Christina Niesinger Property. Item F is Request by the Recreation Department to Supplicate Desk. Item G is Quiet Ridge Annexation Development Annexation Agreement Right-of-Way and Easement, and Item H is Acceptance of Transfer of Property from Cootney County.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Now, to entertain a motion.
A move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, we do have one public hearing, and that is on the Pleasant View Annexation. And Mr. Manley's going to be presenting. With that, I will open the public hearing. I am looking for it.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and Council President Wilhelm. John Manley, planning manager here, to present the Pleasant View Annexation Case File ANNX-52020. The owners, there's a multitude of owners, you may have seen in your staff packet, Exhibit S5. The city is being the applicant on this. It's a unique situation to where, due to the size and scope and potentially being part of an urban renewal district, that staff determined it would be best for us to be the applicants on that. So, tonight, we're looking for approval to annex this property and have a zoning designation of industrial on it. The Planning and Zoning Commission, on January 27th, forwarded a recommendation of that zoning aspect of industrial to be considered as part of this annexation. The location of this annexation is, as you see here, in the red-hatched area, south of Prairie Avenue, east of Pleasant View Road, and north of Seltice Way. It's along the east portion of the Pleasant View corridor. One of the things that came out of the presentation by P&amp;Z was, what is the mix of industrial, and what do we currently have in the City of Post Falls? So, I did want to present this, as far as what they're, 1.2% of the city is zoned heavy industrial. That's a legacy zoning district. No longer can an individual ask for that. It was applicable back in the day when we had more of the mills and those type of production facilities. 12.9% of the city is currently industrial, at 1,104 acres with approval. If that was determined, it would go up to 15.4% at about 1,358, or 1,358 acres. The next few slides, I'll go into kind of where they're at and kind of explain a little bit more of the situation at hand with this industrial makeup. 3.6 being technology mixed at a 305 acres. So, the technology mixed is, as you see here, in the red and white hatched area. It's different than the industrial type that they're requesting this evening, and the fact that more than likely, what you're going to get here is more of a tech-based campus-like development pattern. There's, it requires a development agreement to go with it, so the focus, you're not competing with the same type of industrial user at a facility or a site like this. Then out west, we got some other industrial lands. We got the Riverbend Commerce Park at this location, and you can kind of see here, the lots are fairly small, and it's part of a Property Owners Association, or they have a CCNRs as part of that. So, the benchmark for development there has a higher price point than some other competitive industrial locations. And then we have Wadsworth, the Point Development Area. You see a lot of it industrial, but we have an approved commercial site plan over there with Cabellos and Walmart. So, the focus for that is more of the commercial slant than it is the pure industrial type, large acreage-like industrial users. Going out east, you have, as you're heading towards a corridor lane on Seltice, we do have that industrial there. Once again, though, we're in that lost, that small lot industrial-type properties. You see here Plummer Forest, they're that legacy heavy industrial. More than likely, as they phase out, if they ever did, you would see probably a zone change and a reduction in that total acreage, as it would more likely transition into some type of residential zone. So, looking at this, and partly the reason for this going forward is to regionally compete for large industrial-type development lands with this. Once again, there's that breakout. Both water and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. But part of that industrial, and to determine the zoning, is to look at the six review criteria. You're looking at, is it consistent with the future land use map? Does it be consistent with goals and policies in the comp plan, traffic patterns, street classifications, existing development? And these three are kind of bundled together in the same conversation. So, you look at surrounding zoning, most of the surrounding area is currently in the county, hence the annexation, but there is going to be, if it was approved, this gap between this border and the Maguire. Of time and in our comp plan, we've assessed this, and it's right here, we either have a transitional area and a business commercial, that's that pink. So, the proposal is consistent with the most recent comp plan update. You can see here that the business commercial is intended to provide some diversity in it. It mentions light industrial and some artisan manufacturing and some mixing of uses. This wasn't explicitly called out as an implementing zone, and the reason for that was, we knew that, for this part of it, that that, more than likely, if the mining ever went away, lent itself to industrial-type development. The probability is that Pleasant View could go commercial, but how you transition from industrial uses to residential uses needs to be done in somewhat of a delicate manner, but it can be achieved. So, looking at the focus areas, it brought in this element of flexibility within it, and you can kind of see here is a mix of residential and, you know, it's commercial, industrial, between the Corbin and Pleasant View Road. So, it was envisioned that this area could have some industrial there in it, but it wasn't explicitly called out. What that would do is odds are, if this was industrial, you would see requests for medium-type uses, or not quite as intense as you would, as you would as the industrial. So, you could go from industrial, maybe to some limited commercial, or commercial, maybe some medium-density or higher-density type product as you got closer to, and started migrating to these larger lot developments to the east. And that's where you see here the implementing zones for this as being that R2, R3, your limited commercial, and your other medium-type uses to help get that transition to occur. Any questions so far? So, looking at some of the goals of the comp plan, you see here is growing a resilient economy, establishing the appropriate quantities and type of land uses in Post Falls, and that's why I wanted to show that mixing of the land and kind of how some of those are going to transition and evolve, as this is providing a niche that we currently don't have. The other one is protect and maintain the natural resources, including clean air, soils, river, aquifer, and minimizing light and pollution citywide. So, going back to this slide, once again, you look at the industrial, there's really only two alternatives for this area to develop. It's either going to be in the county or develop in the city. You can see here, on the west side, these five-acre lots, they are already being developed in the county, but more than likely, those lots will stay in the county. It'll be very difficult to ever get them off their septics and onto municipal services. So, one advantage of this area being in the city is if it develops as industrial, not only will it assist meeting some of the economic needs for the city, it'll also help protect the area and protect the aquifer. Looking at some of the other criteria, the next two really aren't applicable because it's not commercial or high-density, although I can say that with a caveat, a lot of commercial developments are allowed in the industrial zone, and those would be consistent with that criteria. Next one is limited in neighborhood commercial, as they proceed further, so they're not asking for that. The last one is industrial zones are typically assigned for properties with good access to major transportation routes. So, looking at this, this oblique view from Google Earth, what I try to do here is highlight existing or planned interchanges. So, we have the Pleasant View and the Beck Interchanges. It is planned that eventually there'll be an interchange on 53. Running parallel to this, you'll have 53 and I-90 with interchanges connecting this. So, that provides good connectivity to support the proposed zoning. Also, to highlight, there's the interchange in red, you have currently undeveloped east-west roads that, through development, will get improved in, with urban conditions and urban streets, connecting potential residents of Post Falls to a potential place of employment along Pleasant View. Here's the agencies that are routed. The Post Falls Police commented as neutral. Do you have any comments for me with staff report?
So, that would be the applicant and staff, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone wishing to testify? Thank you. Wishing to testify in opposition, is it Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin Casson? Please come forward, give your name for the record, and we've got a timer here that you can look, and you've got four minutes.
Can I pull this down?
Yes.
So, I am in opposition of the...
Name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Casson.
Thank you.
And of the, I'm not sure about the annexation, except that with that, it comes apparently linked with industrial. That's my backyard. I live on Corbin, five acres, and the last meeting that we came to, the buffer that's proposed is like 25 feet, that's as big as my living room, and I think it should, if it's going to be just that amount, it should be, I mean, if it's going to be industrial, that it would be a larger amount, and... I'm not a very good speaker, I'm just, I can't... The industrial, if it's, if it's already zoned commercial, if there's going to be businesses in there, I, that's what my hope is, that it just stays business and commercial. If it's going to be linked to residential properties, my neighbors all up and down Corbin feel the same way that I've talked to, and, well, I don't know about, I'm sure they're all opposed to the annexation, but I just wanted to speak my piece.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
No one else wishing to testify? John, do you want to address the comment on the buffer, please?
Yeah, so, buffering between industrial and residential, the 25 feet, I mean, that's what we have on NR code, it's been there for some time. It's, it appears, I haven't, at this time, seen evidence that it doesn't work. What's complicated about the future land use map and growth is you're planning for a situation that's not today, and admittedly, as we go through those period, there's going to be awkward periods of time. That's why you see those implementing zoning districts, you don't see R1 in that area, because long-term, we see other higher uses adjacent to industrial. There'll just be periods of time that the industrial will provide a buffer. Some may argue down the road, but the buffer, why was it needed? Because you ended up with two uses compatible. It's just we're in that awkward stage, the beginning steps of that corridor potentially transforming.
But anything that would come forward, as far as plans would need to address buffering between whatever use and the neighboring use, is that correct?
Yes, any plans, they'd have to debuffer and, or potentially develop uses that are compatible and to help that transition better.
Okay. Any question? Alan, go ahead.
John, on that question of buffering, it's my understanding that it's not just 25 feet of open space, that that buffer has some requirements about vegetation, or...
Yeah. It's five deciduous and five evergreen trees every 100 feet, and I believe, enter the minimum caliper on those that they have to be. I don't have that memorized, and I believe 15 shrubs. So, the goal is that you end up with a fence at six feet to obscure it, and then you end up, within a certain period of time, getting trees to block it out further. And so, I talked to the urban forester, we had a situation where we're discussing making a modification, going to an exception to 10, because they required 15, but he didn't want to downside. So, 15, so what I'm trying to get to is, the, any more than that, he would feel would be incompatible with additional trees, long-term.
Great, thank you.
Just for clarification, if this annexation and assigned zoning does not happen, that does not necessarily prevent industrial... does not necessarily prevent industrial uses from occurring along the corridor. They could still occur on county property as they are presently on the west side, correct?
That is true.
So, I appreciate the concerns that the homeowners in the area may have, but as Mr. Manley said, none of us has a crystal ball. They may end up developing industrial within the county anyway. And in that case, they wouldn't be hooked up to sanitary sewer, et cetera. So, the density in county, in terms of the number of employees per acre and everything else, tends to be lower. But that's because of the, there's only so much a septic can handle. It can still be industrial, however. So, again, I kind of wish I had a crystal ball on that, but we don't.
I would like to, my response was those industrial zone properties in the county could, I don't know what, I don't have the zoning map for the county. So, if there is an egg piece, obviously it would be egg. I don't know what all that zoning is up and down. But yeah, your point is exactly right.
They could request a change to industrial. Right. Any other questions?
Just wanted to, so when they did come in for approval for an industrial site, they'd have to submit some type of landscaping plan anyway with that, that you would look at and make sure that the buffer zone was adequate and correct. And so, this way you have some control over it as a staff to guarantee...
Yes. It's important for the industrial developers and the neighbor to have some screening to protect themselves. Most industrial developers are open to putting in a buffer, because it mitigates complaints to themselves. And so, I've never been with like a site plan where the buffer was that much of an obstacle either.
Linda?
John, so just kind of for clarification there, so it has to be 25 feet wide, but how tall is the buffer? I mean, is it like, you said about the trees and shrubs, but I've seen buffers before that look like a hill almost, you know? They make a hill and then plant that, and then the trees are on top of it?
Yeah, the way it's worded is you do fence wall or berm.
Berm, yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
Most of developers go to the fence as an option. They can apply a berm in place of a fence.
Could you require a berm so that it's not so, I mean, to me, I mean, I might be wrong, but to me, that would seem like it would, number one, cut down on the noise if the berm, because it's solid and the fence is, I mean, it's solid, but it's not going to keep much sound out? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yep. There's some validity in as far as the noise, since noise travels omnidirectional, that if you had a solid ground, you would, more than like a side obscuring fence with slats, you probably would get a little bit more infiltration of sound.
Right. And at the, and industrial uses seem to me to be loud. So, I mean, trucks and things like that.
So, you're talking the, like on the eastern border as it gets adjacent to residential uses?
Right, yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
I think I would punt a warrant to maybe respond. See Al?
So, generically, we have done that in the past. It kind of is driven by the user. So, for instance, if something that comes in, that's a more heavy industrial-type use that would require a special use permit, we have seen instances where those have been required to have vertical and horizontal separations, a berm, trees, a wall. Frankly, I think one had a wall on top of a berm. They're stacking it, we're getting, it was getting tall. The difficult thing is, is that most of the uses are allowed in our industrial zone. As John alluded to earlier, we don't have a heavy industrial use zone anymore. The uses that we have typically are going to be quieter. It's not going to be across the board, that there's going to be a lot of noise generating, like heavy drop presses or forges, that type of thing. We don't typically have that type of use in this area. But if we do, and those are typically going to require a special use permit, those are the types of places where you're going to see additional requirements. Under special use permits, we have more latitude in requiring compliance with additional requirements to protect the neighborhood and make sure it blends in better. And that's typically where we would see that type of thing.
You okay, Linda? John?
I don't know if I can add to that, but as the presentation noted too, that there are a lot of uses allowable in an industrial zone, you know, the retail places in Expo or, you know, by Cabela's, including. So, I don't think it makes sense to have a requirement that it has to have a berm if it ends up being a small retail shop. That's a pretty burdensome expense for a potential use that wouldn't need it.
But staff would have some control if they, as it comes forward?
If it requires a special use permit, then the planning commission's going to have the say on what needs to be done to make sure that it fits. And if it just requires a site plan approval, then staff's going to require that it meets the buffering requirement.
With that, I guess I should close the public hearing. Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to act?
I would move to approve the Pleasant View annexation and associated industrial zone.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Seeing that in roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is unfinished business, returning business, and tonight, it's the 60% design approval for Post Falls Landing. Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robbie Quinn, Parks Planner, and I'm here presenting the 60% design for approval on these Post Falls landings. Just to kind of go through a little bit of background and a timeline of some of the events that have taken place to date. So, originally, the city owned a quarter-acre parcel, kind of on the tip of the landings down here. And then in 2017, the city was approached by Vista to, for the proposal of partnering on a crane pad and park development. Then in 2018, Vista had presented some concepts to the city, which one of them was approved to continue the negotiations. Then February 5th, 2019, the city and Vista entered into an MOU, which essentially stated that Vista would build the park if the city could purchase the land and allow Vista to use the park for crane pad maintenance and operations. And then that purchase was finalized June 21st of 2019, which we purchased an additional 1.75 acres to bring the site to a total of two acres, highlighted in red here. So then, fast forward to last year, Vista had put the project out for bid for a design-build contractor on June 4th of 2020. And then during that process, the city council had approved the department to move forward with some site cleanup. That was obligated in our purchase agreement. And so, with that, we ended up cleaning some asphalt piles that were along the entrance drive, a large concrete retaining wall that basically cut through the middle of the park, and some other deprey on the upper end of the park. And then September 8th, Vista contracted with Slaton Construction for the design and construction of the project. November 3rd, Vista presented or submitted their 30% design and opinion of probable construction cost to the city and Vista. December 7th, Vista hired geo engineers to do some additional cleanup on the site. There were some contaminated soils that were discovered during some of the Phase II environmental studies. And so, those were primarily found behind the existing seawall here, and Vista had those taken care of in December. And then, a couple weeks ago, January 26th, Vista submitted their 60% design and opinion of probable construction cost. So, that's kind of what we're going to go over today. But just to step back a little bit, this is the approved design that was linked to the MOU, the concept, as you will. So, when Vista contracted with Slaton, this was essentially their starting point. And obviously, this was conceptual. And so, when they got the site topo, some things kind of had to tweak a little bit. But this is what they used to develop their 30% design. And so, when they presented their 30% design, that was about $2.2 million over their approved construction budget. And so, the city and Vista, along with Slaton, for the past couple months, have worked through that design to try and reduce the scope while maintaining the goals of each party. And for the city, that was obviously a recreational space that provided gathering opportunities, the amphitheater, and programmability for recreational events, special, you know, special events, concerts, those things. And for Vista, that was their crane pad, staging area, and access from fourth. And so, this essentially was accumulation of those efforts, brought us to the 60% design here. And as I mentioned, 30% was 2.2 over budget, so some notable scope reductions. Obviously, in general, the scope of the project has kind of shrunk, but specifically the amphitheater, some of the hardscape elements, both of the overlooks have been removed, the fishing overlook and then the main one over the point. And the length of seawall has been reduced. But with that, we're still getting a sizable amphitheater, roughly 150 people, person capacity with ADA seating. They're going to be rebuilding the seawall. Currently, it's failing in some portions and is not structurally sound to support a crane. So, they're going to remove that, rebuild it, and elongate it a little bit, not as much as the original design, as well as provide a new guardrail. And that will also extend from the end of the wall to the buoy line to protect the pedestrians on the site. They'll be providing site lighting, so along from fourth and Falls parking lot, they'll be lighting to the plaza and then within the plaza. Event power, so there'll be power pedestals as well as in-ground receptacles, which can be used for, again, concerts, any sort of booth power or food trucks. Access from Falls parking lot and Fourth Street with the asphalt path. And then lastly, kind of focus some of the landscape on the high-impact areas, such as the plaza and the parking lot entrance. And then tried to set it up for future expansion. So, some of the lighting has been reduced, but we're going to be setting conduit and handholds to where a future pole could go, so it can easily be placed at a future date. As well as the amphitheater, there's been minimal plantings kind of on the top end. So, if, at a future date, if we wanted to add a couple more rows to increase the capacity, that would be possible with minimal impact on the site. And then lastly, kind of leaving the 20-foot requirement here as to a future connection that could be for the esplanade to the condos. And so, this is just kind of a quick comparison, side by side. As I mentioned, just the general, the overall scope has been reduced. But like I said, we still feel like this meets all the desired goals with a very similar user experience in the site, gathering spaces on the plaza, the amphitheater, and some of the landscaping and amenities. And so, looking forward, next steps, so the end of next week, Vista and Slaton will be looking to present the 90% design documents and construction costs. Then they would hope to start construction either the week of the 12th or the 19th of April, and then ultimately finish construction in September, October timeframe. And so, again, we're seeking council's approval to proceed with the current design through 100% construction documents. And with that, myself or Dave are here to...
Robbie, taking a look at this, compared to where we were a couple months ago, where we didn't know if this was going to happen?
Mm-hmm.
I think you guys made good progress. Are you confident that at the 60% stage, Vista's on board and will, in fact, continue to get this park built?
Yeah, absolutely. As far as the budget, we're still a little bit over, about $150,000 over right now, which is still, you know, we've come a long ways from 2.2 to 150. And in that, there's about a $210,000 contingency built into their budget. So, I think as we move from 60 to 90, we'll see that shrink even more. So, we'll be really close, and then we'll kind of just have to look through, you know, where we can create some other adjustments as needed.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, Robbie, on, I know there was a discussion that we had earlier on the turf. So, is this going to be with field turf or is this price with the natural grass?
This is with natural grass.
Natural grass, huh?
Yeah, but it is set up, so the drainage system is all there and installed either way. And so, again, at a future date, if that's something that we decide to move forward with, it'll be set up for that.
Or if we had lower bids or something, then we could come in. So, would you do an add-alternative for field turf, just to see?
It's currently not an add-alternate. We have actually solicited a bid just separately to see what that would come in at. Again, the scope in general has just shrunk, so that number will likely go down, but at this point, it's not included, no.
Okay. Mr. Wolf?
Robbie, I commend you. As the mayor said, you guys have done a lot of good work on this. I was confused when I first read this, so I just want to make sure, I clarify, this does not mean that we're going to be on the hook for 40% of the cost.
No.
This is just 60% of the way in the project.
Right, yeah. So, the design is at 60% right now. And so, they're still working through, you know, to get to 100%, obviously, which will be the bid, the construction documents. So, before we got too far along, we just wanted to present to council to make sure we have your approval. Obviously, there's been some changes in the design, so that's kind of what we're doing this evening.
I think you guys did a fabulous job, because I, you know, when I looked at the two, it wasn't that much different. And knowing where we were, as we talked about a few months ago, I thought we were going to just have a slab of concrete sitting there. So, great job.
Thank you. Questions? We do need a motion, correct?
We do. And also, let you know that you're likely to see either the next council meeting or the one after that, an agreement, an updated MOU with Vista. We've been waiting till the design about got done. We should have that updated MOU that covers the actual construction phase and then also programming coming to you in the very near future. But we do need a motion.
Thank you.
I would move to approve this 60% design approval for Post Falls Landing.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Robbie. Next item up is an ordinance on Quiet Ridge Annexation. Dave?
Move to place the ordinance, Quiet Ridge Annexation. Are you talking, Dave? Are you presenting? Huh?
Yeah, Linda, thank you. I wasn't sure, so that was my error. So, there's just, this is just the annexation?
Yes.
Okay. It just had Dave's name after, so I was confused. Linda, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Am I good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Move to place the ordinance, Quiet Ridge Annexation, on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 1.77 acres located in the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 51 North Range 5 West, Boise, Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property, single-family residential R1, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Quiet Ridge Annexation, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Linda, thanks for that. I read the, I saw Dave's name, and I thought we were going to have presentations, so I'm glad you started. Thank you. Next item up is resolution on the adoption of the Cootney County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll move to approve the resolution, adoption of the Cootney County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, and note that it was about 800 pages.
I would say note that I looked at it, but I will honestly admit I did not read it all.
I'll second that.
I thought Pat was going to read it to us.
Motion to second. Further discussion.
I would just like to say, as you pointed out, 800 pages. What a comprehensive document.
Yeah.
I mean, I went through the, especially the part about Post Falls, and it's like, man, they haven't thought of just about everything. I thought... I thought it was really well done.
If anybody needs it, I have it all printed out. Of course I do.
Increase the paper budget.
Motion to second, roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up tonight is administrator staff reports and the council long-term visioning document. Shelley?
Good evening. So basically, I took the information that we had at our prior meeting talking about visioning, put it under the categories that we have under priority-based budgeting, took the terminology, made it all in the same tense so that the language of the sentences was uniform. And I'll take any commentary that you may have for any adjustments, or if you like it as it is, we'll just include it in the 2022 budget process for the city.
Any questions or comments for Shelley?
My only question is, I'm, I'm thinking this must be like a living document that's going to be changing and moving and stuff like that, that this isn't-
So every year, basically, we'll look at this, edit it and make any updates within the budget process. I should say every other year, because our budget process is really, every two years that we do the full budget process.
Good. We do not need a motion on that, correct?
I don't believe so, no, because it'll be adopted within the budget process as we move forward. So you guys can look forward to our budget processing, starting with council. I believe in March, there's some kickoff information that starts coming out. So we'll have workshops coming to you in a future council meeting soon.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Citizens' issues.
We have one.
Okay. This section of the agenda is, is reserved for people wishing to address council on a non-agenda item.
This is via email by Julie Roy. She says, hello, I would like to know if you were doing anything about the exponential increase in rental housing. With all of this new development, is any of it going to be for lower-income households? Is any, is there, is there going to be any sort of rent control? Are there incentives currently being offered to developers for constructing low-income housing? According to Idaho Housing, I am not considered low-income, yet still cannot find affordable housing in Post Falls. Talking with local friends, I know I am by far not the only one. This is difficult. We need to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just make a comment that, you know, there are some builders that are building subsidized housing, but I know there's been some issues with that and I understand the prices continue to rise. And it's something that from the city's point of view, we've not offered incentives. I think that would probably have to come from either the state or federal government. But we do, I do appreciate and understand that prices are, are continuing to escalate. So I appreciate that, that comment and concern. Mayor and council comments, we do have a joint workshop on Monday night. And it will be between council, planning, zoning and urban, and I will be attending via Zoom at that meeting. But it was nice meeting all of you again tonight, so. But anyway, that meeting is at 5:30?
Yes.
Yep, 5:30. So we'll look forward to visit with everybody again on Monday. And then the only other thing is, as I said, start the council meeting, you know, we're in our, what I consider, I guess, our second phase of winter and the roads are treacherous, accidents on the freeway, and it took me 15 minutes to get from my house to the city hall, which is probably about two and a half miles, just because of people taking alternative routes to avoid the accidents. So be careful. Please pass our appreciation on to our streets department and those folks who are out there. You know, we hear, we, I haven't heard as much issue because we haven't had as much snow, but we have people who are concerned or complaining because of different things. You know, they're, they're not plowing early enough, they're plowing too late, they're, and, you know, and it's, it's easy for all of us to maybe critique the job that's being done when we're in a warm house. But I sincerely appreciate those that are out all, all hours of the day and night, working long shifts, and they are limited, it's the number of hours they can work. And let's do whatever we can to help them by keeping cars off the road and et cetera, so they can get our streets plowed. I also hear that our roads are much worse than everybody else's, and I will just let you know, I've driven in Coeur d'Alene and Spokane, and that is not the case. So again, please pass my appreciation on to all our staff who are taking care of that. Council comments. Al?
I want to piggytail, piggyback on what the comment from the lady that Shannon just read. Seems like I've read a lot about growth, what's going on with growth. And the thing that bothers me the most is the misinformation that's out there about what we can do about growth. I'm wondering if there's a way for us to have like a town hall meeting or whatever, where people can come and actually voice their, their concerns, but also hear what we're limited to. I mean, there's still people think that we can put up a wall at the border and just say, no more people here, you know. I read today where they, you know, no more Californians or something like that. And it's like, you know, we, we can't do that, but people out there are just, they're looking at the city to say, stop the growth, but there's only certain things that we can do. So I, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know whether that, a town hall where people can come in and at least get an answer to their questions, or-
So staff has been talking about this the last couple of meetings. And one of the things we're looking at is we're putting together a list of topics that are related to growth that seem to come back either to council or from citizen comments. The list has been circulated to department heads, we're working on it, we'll get it to council, but what we're looking at doing is once a month, probably the second meeting of the month, you'll get either a staff presentation or a workshop talking about each of the individual growth-related items. So the upcoming meeting will be talking about moratorium on growth and what we can and can't do in the state of Idaho regarding moratoriums on growth. And our legal counsel, Warren Wilson, is putting together the memo on that. So it'll come under a staff report during a council meeting for that particular topic. But some of the more in-depth topics, like affordable housing and, and fair housing and stuff, will be workshops prior to the council meeting. And so we're going to start with that. Right now, we're still discouraging the open forum type of things where you bring in, like I was looking at this weekend, pictures of the town hall that the legislators held in Coeur d'Alene where you had 500 people shoulder to shoulder and none of them with a mask on. So we're still discouraging that at this point. But we do want to start getting these topics and education out to the citizens on what we can and can't do as a city. And so we're hoping by having that at the council meeting and then maybe doing some press releases from there and getting the information out through Facebook and those other social media. And the press has been really good to us most recently on helping us carry some of these articles. So hopefully, again, we can partner with them and get information out also.
Good. Sounds like you guys are once again several steps ahead of me, so.
Also a quick plug, we're also working on a series of short informational videos that we're going to live, that we're pushing out with our Facebook and our social media. We've had two that we've released so far. There's more of those to come.
Great.
And those are good, and when you're talking about the topics, you know, breaking it down, whether it's an article in the paper, which people tend to read the first paragraph, and so if it's not all there. But graphics, graphics, you know, pull a, a topic and just have a short graphic about a specific thing. Kind of like a PowerPoint, my favorite, except it would be just one page, you know, just, just a one-topic graphic. It's like the, the tax thing that, who just did that?
These guys.
It was, it, it was, it was rather remedial, you know, but I don't think that it went to talking down to people. But it was laid out in very understandable terms. And, and those videos, I think are very effective if they stay to a very specific topic. And in a workshop that we have, the, the email mentioned rent control. Is there even such a thing in the state of Idaho, rent control? Or is that like a, I picture that in New York City?
No, no rent control. Yeah, I'm not aware of anything, yeah.
Yeah, so that might be a nice one to, here's the thing about rent control. No, it doesn't exist, or, or the reasons why. But yeah, just bite-sized pieces would be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I did have one other, because that was not actually my comment, that was piggybacking off of your comment.
Okay.
I keep seeing you in this reflection and I think, oh my God, he's got sequins on his, he's got sequin shirt on. In November, when we passed, I believe, a resolution, so we had a meeting, I believe, on November 9th about the mask mandate, a special meeting. Then at our regular meeting after that, then we did a resolution encouraging masks, but then it went a step further as far as the authority granted to you, which you already had, to make those determinations, the COVID determinations for city hall. Has that sunsetted? Because it seemed to me that it was three months.
Yes, it has sunsetted, so I spoke with the mayor about this last week. And with the Panhandle, Panhandle Health having their mask mandate in place until it's either April 22nd or 23rd, we felt it wasn't necessary to bring that back to this body because we have a authority above us that has put in a mandatory mask mandate. And so the conversation wouldn't come back here until that at least expired, unless, unless the council members wanted it to come back.
Well, that just proves that great minds think alike, because that was exactly what I was going to say, as long as the Panhandle Health District had made that determination for the Panhandle.
All of Panhandle, all the Panhandle, right.
Yeah, it seemed a little redundant. So I was seeing, I was thinking that it did sunset right about now, so.
Yeah, it sunsetted either this week or last week.
Yeah.
I don't remember which one, but, so if you want us to bring it back, we can, but otherwise we just wait until-
Seems not necessary.
We okay? I don't think it's necessary.
I, I was just going to say, on, on the growth, the no growth, I think there's the two issues there. There's the growth, but it's becoming the affordability of housing. And it seems like each week you're hearing more and more stories that people are putting an offer of 70,000 more, people are offering 80,000 more agents. And it's, I think, you know, we don't, it's hard to tell where that's going to end, because if you've got, I remember the one gentleman said if a kid was coming out of college or a family with a $64,000 income, they can't afford a home here. Now it's got to be close to $100,000 income to afford a home. And I don't, that's hard for a city to solve that issue. It's a supply and demand issue.
Wilhelm gave me a number the other day. What, you remember what that number was, a multiple, it was just staggering to me.
98 residential homes on the Coeur d'Alene MLS residential homes right now. That covers Priest River, State Line to Worley and includes the Silver Valley. So the housing shortage is-
Yeah.
There's, there's the shortage, but there is also the phenomena that I don't think was here the last time that there was the boom.
And that is the cash buyer who comes, this is not uncommon, this is not rare, and I'm sure that Linda will, can verify this. But where you have someone that has, that's going through a bank, has everything, all their ducks in a row and are a wonderful buyer, and they are getting outbid by 50, 75, $100,000 above list price in cash. Cash buyers. It's the cash buyers that are just pricing regular people. And it doesn't matter whether it's a $400,000 house or a $750,000 house, whatever the list price is, somebody's going to come in with a pot of cash and pay an incredibly unreasonable price. So I don't know what the answer, I don't think that any of us can solve that at a municipal level.
There's a great article that Shelley sent out to us today. And if you haven't read it, read it, it's very interesting. So we, it's been discovered and people want to get out to bigger cities. It's just fact of life, so.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Well, and that's the, I guess, just to add on to that, it's the conundrum that we're stuck with, and that is, people don't want growth, but they want affordable housing.
Yeah.
Well, if you stop the growth, then the housing is just going to skyrocket, so.
And the other thing is, it's not the city who's out soliciting people to move here.
No.
Yeah, we're, we're here.
And it's not the city that is selling the property.
Exactly.
And so it's not always the developers, these people who are selling the property, the land on the prairie and all of that, a lot of those people have owned it for generations. That is their savings. That is their, that is their investment. And so I'd probably sell if I was out there too, sorry.
Yeah. It's hard when they come in with some of the prices, they're looking at paying for some of this land or property to turn it down when you're the person who owns it.
Yeah.
So. Except you got to go live in a van down by the river, because there's nothing to buy.
Yeah.
We do need an executive session tonight.
We do.
How long?
15.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for a public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but intimately likely to be litigated, that no action will be taken and the session will last approximately 15 minutes.
Second.
Motion second. Questions?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, we're in our executive session.[1537.22] Call the meeting back to order. Are there any motions to come forward?
Adjourned.
The opposed in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.